Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 21st, 2025. And I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets, we are ever thankful for the many positive, friendly, understanding, and well-intended people that we have joining the City Council, some leaving the City Council, but many are staying with us. And we are just overwhelmed with appreciation and gratitude for the outstanding group of people that we have willing to step forward and serve on the Batavia City Council. And I think that's a record of appreciation for a lot of good work that's been done over the years to make Batavia a very unique and friendly town for many people to want to live in and call home. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving the foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Also, tonight, we ask for understanding and vision and compromise and well-intentioned ideas from the members of the City Council as they go about this business, knowing that in each one of them, we are here with individuals who truly want to make Batavia a wondrous place for their families to live. And finally, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are sick or infirmed, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every one of these men and women as they go about their recoveries. And we ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance? Anybody want to volunteer? Almost over. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Beraza, Lancy, Beck, Peiper, Malone, Wolf, Solfa, Baron, Lehman, Ayazi, Malay, Euer, Serone, Vogelsinger, 13 present, 1 absent.
Do we have the necessary form to conduct business? Moving to item four, reminder, if you're going to speak to us tonight, please use the microphone at your desk, or if you're coming from the audience, please come up and use the platform and speak so that it can be recorded, because this whole meeting is being recorded on BATV, so it will be broadcast. And if you don't use the mic, people can't hear what you're saying. Moving to item five, items to be removed, edited, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? Okay, item six is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alden Beck, would you present this, please?
Yes, Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file the building reports for March of 2025 and the Historic Preservation Commission minutes for March 24th, 2025, and for approval, the April 11th, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,062,081.43. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,480,984.83. The City Council minutes for April 7th, 2025. Resolution 2025-49-R authorizing repair of Cherry Park Transformer. Resolution 2025-39-R authorizing loan forgiveness to Water Street Studios for the loan year commencing March 14th, 2024 through March 13th, 2025. Resolution 2025-52-R accepting a plat of dedication of part of Morton Street, 1125 Morton Street. Resolution 2025-53-R accepting a plat of dedication for property along Windsor Lane and Wobonce Trail, 500 Wobonce Trail. Ordnance 2025-24, accepting a plat of vacation along Windsor Lane, 436 and 500 Wobonce Trail. Resolution 2025-50-R authorizing an agreement with Upland Design for landscape architectural services for public restroom plaza. Ordnance 2025-20, amending Title III, Chapter III liquor control of the Batavia Municipal Code. Resolution 2025-58-R authorizing execution of a highway authority agreement with SBG Real Estate LLC. Resolution 2025-59-R authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement with SBG Real Estate LLC. And ordinance 2025-26, an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or any other method. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay. Move Alden Beck, second one, and Solfa for the approval of the consent agenda presented. Do we have anybody on the council that wants to make any comments? Clerk call the roll.
Beck?
Hi.
Peiper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Solfa?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Beraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, 1 absent.
Yes, motions approved for the consent agenda. All right, I'm going to switch around the agenda just because I think it would be helpful for the participant. I'm going to move item nine to item eight and switch item eight. And I've already gotten Mr. Ruth's agreement that he's agreeable to that. Is River here, or is she out in the hall, or somebody want to go out and get her, Chief?
Do we have any matters from the public for seven? You went right past seven.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I don't know if you guys are here.
Do we have anybody in the public to wish to address us this evening? We can have over here by the podium, so we can, everybody wants to get a picture, take one.
So Mayor, I'm just going to read a brief bio about River before we swear her in, if that's all right. So I know many people in this room have already met River today, but I'm excited to officially introduce River to the City Council and also introduce the official start of our Police Department Comfort Dog Program. River is a fox red Labrador Retriever who became part of our department on August 16th, 2024, after spending the first 11 weeks of her life exploring the world with her brothers and sisters in Iowa. Since arriving, River has been busy with obedience training, connecting with fellow comfort dogs, and of course, taking the occasional nap, which she's about to do right now. River's already made appearances at several community events, including trunk or treats, where she was dressed as a pumpkin, I'm sorry, River. Meet and greets, Coffee with a Cop, and other events where she honed her skills, provided a fun and positive presence for the community. River loves meeting new people and is quick to show everyone she meets that she is 100% good girl, although Liz, I think you would disagree and say it's more like 90% good girl, 10% troublemaker. Okay. River's favorite activities include getting pets and snuggles from everyone she meets, playing with toys and other comfort dogs, some of whom are here today with us, and of course, army crawling across the room. We're thrilled to have River on board with our department, her sweet personality. Perfect timing. We did not plan this. Her undeniable cuteness will undoubtedly make a positive impact on the community. River is looking forward to meeting everyone at community events and providing comfort wherever it is needed. I also just want to take a brief moment to thank everyone and those who have contributed or otherwise helped bring this program to fruition. Specifically, I want to thank Batavia Animal Clinic for the donation of routine veterinary services, Petland Batavia for the donation of nutritious food and treats for River, Wolf Beach Batavia for providing discounted obedience training, Ridgeview Labradors, the Iowa breeder where the department obtained River, the financial donations provided by Mrs. Frank and Mr. and Mrs. Montanari, Chief Maza, who is hiding in the back of the room here, former Chief Maza for having the vision and courage to pursue a comfort dog program for the city of Batavia, and lastly, Officer Joe Gudella, who tragically passed away from carbon monoxide poisoning, but he was regularly an advocate for Batavia PD to get a canine, just knowing how immeasurably valuable a dog would be for this community. So I want to mention him as well. So Mayor, that's all I have. I think we are ready for the swearing in.
Well, we're ready. I just want to explain to everybody we have an open office that I guess we created, and we got River to sign. Some wanted to do one, got an ink pad, and we had to put his paw on the ink pad, and then we inserted it here, so he's already signed the open office for you.
That was only 14 attempts, Mayor.
Well, whatever, it worked.
Do you need a microphone?
All right, official oath of office for Batavia Comfort Dog. I, River, having been appointed to the position of Comfort Dog in the city of Batavia, do soundly swear to provide a comfort and companionship to all those who need it. I pledge to greet all with a wagging tail and a friendly face, bringing calm with every cuddle. I promise to offer a warm embrace and a soft paw when needed, to listen without judgment, and to be a flurry of friendliness to all. No matter who they are, I vow to be a source of unwavering support, serving humans with puppy-eyed wisdom and spreading smiles wherever I go. So help me, dog. Officially welcoming River to our community. We wish her many, many, many years of support and action in Batavia, and she is probably one of the most popular city employees I've ever seen. Well, thank you. Very special moment in the history of the Batavia City Council. And I'm glad we did it. I'm glad we have all these people here to see it, and it speaks well to what the comfort dog idea in the Batavia Police Department is all about. And I really, as the mayor, I'm very proud of our department for putting this whole idea together, because I think it's going to have some magic moments for us that are going to be very productive and heartfelt and win over some, maybe even some bad situations. So I appreciate what this is all about, and we're welcoming our comfort dog with great enthusiasm and support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the comfort dogs in the room to come join us up here?
It's no well, they work together.
Thank you.
North Aurora.
No, sir.
He just wanted me to.
Yeah, I know, you're like.
You got to listen if you want pictures.
The happiest.
Thanks, Mayor.
Great picture.
Yeah.
That one will be recorded in a good 100 years from now in the history of the city of Batavia.
North Aurora, who was the other one?
My dog was that one.
I couldn't, I didn't see it.
That's why he was on. I saw North Aurora spot, or canine spot.
All right, now we'll move to item eight on our agenda, which I moved that back to nine. And this is going to be an update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project, and our engineer, Jerry Ruth, is here. Jerry?
How you gonna do a trick for us or something, keep our attention?
Trick? Ugh.
Come on.
They have numbers and pictures. No tricks.
Pictures will do. Do the pictures move?
Bah.
Wag your tail, Jerry.
This is a trial for focus. Eyes on me. All right. April update, this includes last month, too, so get ready. This is going to be so exciting. So down at the treatment plant, over the last couple of months, the headworks, you're going to see a lot of progress in the pictures with exterior brick and inside ductwork and electrical. Primary clarifiers, concrete placement, primary clarified diversion structure is also going up, and that's actually all in place now. Primary clarifier control building, again, more interior work. They're starting on the final clarifier rehab. Well, they've got one done. They're working on the second one now. And then in the sludge handling building, we have some piping and equipment going in. All right, project photos. This is North Water Street. We've got the bike path open now to the public. There's some stairs from the adjacent property going down to the bike path that are also in place. We've done some restoration on the graded area west of the bike path. Jumping over to just outside of the headworks, the HVAC equipment pads are in, and the equipment is placed on those pads. Ductwork is going in as well. You see here the underground electrical and gas going to those units. These are the stairs basically on the west end of Flynn Street that go up alongside our new retaining wall. Those are in place, not open for the public yet, because I don't think we have railing in place. Now we're inside the building. A lot of progress on the sprinkler piping and the HVAC work inside this building. Process piping, and now we have our stairs inside, so we can access both floors from either level and either entryway. Floor repair and wall finishing inside the channels was complete, so now we have a smooth, appealing surface to walk on, and I'll never look that good again. The exterior brick is going up, starting with the cast stone on the bottom four feet, followed by brick above that, starting on the west face of the headworks, right next to the main building you see there. So here's an aerial from February 9th, the last time I spoke in front of you. This is March 2nd. You see the exterior waterproofing on the side of the building, or, sorry, air vapor barrier. And this is from April 5th. You see the scaffolding on the east side of the building up there. Another perspective, this is from right above Flynn Street, again, February 9th, March 2nd, and April 5th. So we're making a lot of progress both inside and outside of this building. For the clarifiers, you're going to see a lot of formwork and a lot of concrete. That's mainly what these structures are. We have Clarifier 401 with a launder, which is the channel that goes around the inside of the perimeter wall, and the piping that has been cast in place. Retaining walls are all complete, the cast and placed concrete ones, and we've done hydrostatic testing. Again, the water will never look that good again. That is clean water that we use to make sure that the tank doesn't have any leaks. Clarifier 402, same thing, the channel or the launder that goes around the inside of the perimeter wall and piping from that clarifier are all in. Clarifier 403 and 404, the mechanism and the launder covers are all in place, and it's really starting to come together. This is the diversion structure. So in between all four of these structures, there is a rectangle that distributes flow between all four tanks. You'll see from the aerial that it's pretty tight quarters in here. This is the building that controls it, all the primary clarifier control building. Prepping for exterior brick, they'll move on to that when they're done with headworks. And this is them pulling the cables through from the main building to feed power to this building. So they had to have a plant-wide shutdown in order to make this pull. So again, here is February 9th. You see three of the four clarifiers are in. The slab is in for the upper left-hand corner clarifier. This is March 2nd. You see we're starting backfill in between the clarifiers, and the structure in the middle is about to be poured. And like I said, since April 5th, that structure has been poured out with concrete. So a lot of progress on the clarifiers as well. Final clarifier 703, that's the one they started with. We ran new electrical to it, ran new water lines to it, and rehabilitated all of the wear items that had failed. We bypassed the UV structure entirely to remove the old equipment that we had replaced with our new UV building, so that's now out of place in the old channel. It's now just a channel. Made some deep and very difficult to access piping connections. You see, that's what's underneath your feet when you walk at a wastewater treatment plant. There's always a spaghetti of pipes going every which direction. This is inside the sludge handling building. We crammed a lot of equipment in this space, so it's sort of hard to get a good perspective on it. But this is a million bucks plus or minus in just the equipment that gets going into this space. Here's some more of the installation. They're getting paint on the piping. Again, that's starting to come together as well. Now, cost update. So in terms of progress getting through, the contractor has billed out just over $36 million of the 42.6. And that, along with engineering costs, were just about 37 and a half, 37.6 million dollars spent. Now, for construction costs invoiced and paid, we're at 85% completion, even though we're only 58% through our schedule in the agreement. So they're way ahead of schedule, and the contractor won't put anything in writing, and neither will I until we get to a completion date. Change Order 3 was submitted, and I believe it's already been executed, so that's already made the rounds. But I wanted to sort of dive into the change orders that we've had to date, because it doesn't look like it's that much. You know, $24,000 on a $42 million project after three change orders in almost two years. Seems like a lot, or it seems like very little, but there's a lot that went into it. So just to dive into it, I've grouped it into four general categories, before and after cash allowances. In cash allowances, that is made up of $250,000 that the city had the contractor build into his bid for unknown conditions. Things where soils weren't exactly what we assumed. We needed extra money for piping conflicts outside in the site and inside the structures for things that we didn't predict, things like that. So these two figures explain that. So overall, there's been a net add of roughly $232,000, or half a percent of the construction cost. Scope reduction, there was a net deduction of $180,000 plus. Owner requests, there was a net add, and I can get into that a little bit more, but that was one of the earlier change orders that we had to do a whole lot of additional improvements on South Water Street for storm, water, paving, gas, and things of that nature. Design changes, those are where I've categorized that we just either needed to increase the scope because it was something that we found during construction, or maybe it was a design error, or maybe it was something where we showed a conflict on our drawings. And then unforeseen conditions is just that, positive and negative. After we take account of the portion of the cash allowance that we've used to date, we've used those, as you can see, mostly against the design changes and the unforeseen conditions, because that's what they're there for. So it's a lot to digest, but when these change orders do come through, if you do have any questions, feel free to bring them to me here or outside of this office. Give me a call. Before I go too far, does anybody have any questions on this part? No? Okay. Then in terms of schedule, again, these are the dates that the contractor has on his docket. In conversation, it's going to be a lot earlier than that. I predict that we're going to be through final completion yet this year. So things are going smoothly down at the treatment plant, and we're working together to bring this project to a close. And that is all I have. Sorry, no tricks.
I have had several neighboring municipalities asking about this project and wanting to know what's going to be the date that maybe they could bring their city council over to walk through this and see how the model modern plant should be built. So I think you're going to get some visitors here. I kind of dissuaded them from coming right at the moment with all the construction equipment and everything around, and I knew in talking with you, and you and I have talked, that we still got a little ways to go before this thing is really working the way it should, and you want to kind of work it and perfect it to show what it really can do. And I think there's a lot of impression, but there's a lot of interest, because I guess the word in the world or the industry is that Batavia's on the threshold of putting together a really workable, high-intensity, modern plant that is one that others should be trying to emulate, so.
Well, I appreciate it. If I were going to throw a date out there, I'd say 2026. Maybe after the winter, and I'll be glad to give it to her.
And all of it with it still functioning.
Correct.
With the plant still functioning the whole time, which to me, when I've seen what's happened, what was there before, what we've done in the past to it, you know, to see this evolution of it, get to this point, it's pretty amazing that the plant still runs with everything that got moved down there and all the new stuff that got built.
That's credit to the operators and the contractor working together so closely throughout with all the shutdowns that we've had to go through, and there's more to come.
And also tearing up the street, you know, a couple of blocks of the street. That's not an easy thing to throw in there, because then you've got 20 or 30 other people that on a daily basis want to know what's going on. So you guys have done a really good job.
Thank you.
I've had the opportunity, as you all know, to oversee this for many, many, many years, back in the early days when this was nothing like this. And I know how far we've come with it, but it's just great to see how we've really kind of taken the lead in being kind of the department or the city that everybody's looking at now to see how to really do it the right way. So thank you for putting this in that. And I also would credit our staff that we have down there now as really some very in-depth, understandable, educated people who know what they're doing in this world. And this is not an easy world to put yourself into if you don't know what is really what it's all about. And I think some people thought it used to be a patronage situation, you just knew the right person, you hired yourself, and all you had to do was push a button or something. And that's obviously not the case anymore. And we've built the staff, and you are building us the plant that we're going to have a model here, so I'm very proud of that.
Me, too. Thank you.
Just a simple question. Since we don't have hundreds of clarifiers, why do you number them in the hundreds?
We number every structure in the site. So four happens to be the series, we call them series, series four. That's when the primary clarification happens.
Okay.
100 series is like administrative, usually laboratory. Two is like the first step or excess flow. Three is headwork. So it doesn't have to be hundreds. That's just where we end up putting them. And that's honestly probably a carryover from when the plant was expanded in the 80s, and it went down that path.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving then to item 10 is a proclamation for Arbor Day, April 25th, 2025. Alden Beck, you have this?
I do. A proclamation. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and has since grown to be celebrated throughout the nation and world. And whereas, trees can serve as a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, the city of Batavia has been recognized as a Tree City USA for the past 28 consecutive years, demonstrating a longstanding commitment to tree care and community forestry. And whereas, the Batavia Tree Commission plays a vital role in supporting the city's urban forest initiatives, including reviewing and drafting policies related to public trees, reviewing development and redevelopment plans, and coordinating Arbor Day celebrations and the city's annual Tree City USA application. And whereas, Batavia's Parkway Tree Program offers residents the opportunity to purchase high-quality, locally grown Parkway trees selected to thrive in our region, reinforcing Batavia's dedication to reforestation and maintaining a diverse, resilient urban tree canopy. And whereas, the Batavia Environmental Commission supports the Big Tree Program, an initiative that encourages residents to identify and celebrate the largest native, non-invasive trees. non-invasive trees within the city. And along with the Tree Commission volunteers to help measure, catalog, and promote tree, these champion trees, strengthening community involvement and awareness of our natural resources. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Batavia. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant and care for trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Your Honor, I move we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Motion second for the approval of the proclamation. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sulfah?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. I might want to make the public announcement that my staff upstairs, who has prepared this in a framed, do we know where we're going to, Alden Beck, do you know where you're going to give this?
Jeremy Barki is here to accept it on behalf of Public Works.
Was he? Okay. Jeremy, why don't you meet me up there at the podium first? Anybody else in the community would like a copy, all they have to do is call my office, and my secretary. Okay, then, per the agenda, moving to item number 11, which is proclamation administrative Professionals Day, April 23, 2025. Alden Beck, you have this one?
A proclamation. Whereas, administrative professionals are the backbone of efficient and organized workplaces, providing vital support to ensure the smooth operation of offices and departments throughout the City of Batavia. And whereas, the administrative assistants serving in Public Works, the Mayor's Office, Community and Economic Development Department, and the Police Department, and the Fire Department demonstrate unwavering commitment, professionalism, and exceptional skill in managing daily operations, assisting both staff and the public, and contributing to the overall success of their respective departments. And whereas, these dedicated professionals with over 137 years of combined service serve needs of a thriving community of over 26,000 residents and more than 1,200 businesses, while also providing essential support to a city staff of over 200 people, helping ensure the delivery of high-quality public services each day. And whereas, administrative professionals are often the first point of contact, offering a welcoming presence and a helpful hand to residents, businesses, and visitors alike, reflecting the City of Batavia's values of service, respect, and community pride. And whereas, administrative professionals handle a wide variety of responsibilities with flexibility, integrity, and attention to detail, ensuring that essential services continue seamlessly and with the highest level of excellence. And whereas, the City of Batavia wishes to recognize and express sincere appreciation for the contributions and hard work of its administrative professionals, whose efforts enhance public service and strengthen the city's commitment to its residents every single day. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 23, 2025, as Administrative Professionals Day in the City of Batavia, and encourage all residents, city officials, and staff to recognize and honor the outstanding administrative assistants who support the Public Works Department, Mayor's Office, Community and Economic Development Department, Police Department, and Fire Department for their invaluable service and dedication to our community. I move we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Motion second. Kirk, call the roll.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sulfah?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Laura, are you the acceptor?
Yes. I'd also like to ask Sarah Cowan to join me up here. Sarah is part of the 10 administrative professionals who support the rest of the 200 employees at the City of Batavia. Right in that first line, they truly are the backbone of what we do here. And I just, I can't even count the number of times that I have received compliments. Sarah and the other people that she works with in Community and Economic Development, from people who come in and have their questions answered, and their minds put at ease, and yet keep up with all of the administrative duties that they do. We're extremely appreciative of the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We did have a picture taken, I guess.
Sure.
Item 12 is a presentation by Batavia Main Street. I guess we have somebody here.
Hello.
Could you tell us who you are?
I sure can. Let me make sure, okay, get this up here first. My name is Suzy Ray. I am the Community Promotions Coordinator at Batavia Main Street. It's a new position that...
New position, I believe, yeah.
It is, yes.
That's why I didn't know who you were.
Yeah. Yep. I'm in the office a couple of days a week now, so.
Suzy, why don't you tell us also what your business is?
I'm the owner of Light &amp; Pine Collective, which is one of the shops inside of the Wilson Street Mercantile, 222 East Wilson.
At a boardwalk shops also, right?
Yes, back in 2020, one of the first, first round of shops, yes. Before that, I was a part of the Artisan Collective. So I've been with Main Street a long time in multiple capacities, so.
On the board.
Yep, yep. Checking all the boxes of all the ways I can contribute to Main Street. So I'm filling in for Beth and Kristen tonight who weren't able to make it. All right, so farmer's market, our outdoor season is less than a month away. We had an increase of 27% in our applications this year. We have 55 returning vendors and 13 new to our Saturday market. There'll be an average of 59 vendors per week on the Saturday market. We had a 25% increase in applications for our Wednesday night market. I think I just said Saturday night. Saturday morning, Wednesday night, there will be an average of 22 vendors at the Wednesday night market. That market is June through August. The regular Saturday morning market is May 17 through October. So that means the first day, May 17, 8:00 AM, come on out for your farmer's market goodies. We all love the market on River Street. That goes until noon on May 17. This is also an Artisan Collective day because it's the third Saturday of the month. So we attack on artisans and crafters once a month to the market. There'll be around 100 total vendors that day on opening day. All right. In March, we launched our Batavia Main Street Hype Team with a scavenger hunt downtown that ran for a few weeks. It was well-received by residents and business owners. We received some great feedback. I'm just going to read you a couple of things we got from community members. "Thank you for an awesome adventure. My husband and I just moved to Batavia, and we had so much fun wandering around and exploring. It was a fantastic way to get to know Batavia." Another person said, "Thank you for this fun and engaging experience." More things here. We were excited to work with the city on some new banners that you'll see popping up on Batavia Avenue, Houston Street, and River Streets. They're very colorful and fun, and hopefully encourage folks to just keep spending time downtown. Earlier this month, we were happy to participate in the ribbon cutting on Clark Island with the Batavia Park District. And we'd like to invite you all to the ribbon cutting for this year's Batavia Boardwalk Shops. That will be on May 9. The ribbon cutting is at 10:30 AM. You're all invited. If you're not able to make it to the ribbon cutting, the shops are open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Opening weekend is always a great time to come out and meet the new shops. There's a great variety this year. There's always a great variety, but... All right, last slide for tonight, just our Q1 stats. We're a volunteer-led organization. We couldn't do it without our volunteers. We've had 165 volunteer hours this first quarter. And if anybody in the community is looking for ways to volunteer, we're always looking for new folks to volunteer. You can head to our website, downtownbatavia.com, hop on our email list. It's a great way to know what's going on downtown. We send out an email every week with events happening at local businesses, and also events that we're putting on as well. So that's all I... Any questions?
Any questions? I will tell you that I continuously get people from outside of town asking questions about Main Street and your programs and how it's opened. And I think I mentioned at the city council, I just was at a meeting with the new president of Aurora University. And she just couldn't say enough about what a great farmer's market we had here on Saturday morning. And I think she comes every week, and was very complimentary toward what was going on in Batavia. So I felt good about that because we got people from other towns now looking at us. And I've had several other mayors in the area ask me if they can come some Saturday and have a tour of Batavia. And one of them that I know is coming, and she keeps telling me every time I see her, is the mayor of Flossmore, Illinois, which is down in the south suburbs and kind of a troubled area. She's not troubled, but some of her neighbors are in pretty high profile. And she's trying to kind of change things down there a little bit. And she's been told that Batavia's got some good ideas. Come on up and cash in and take some back with you to Flossmore. So we got people from other places coming in and looking at us because of the nice things you are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Congrats on your new position. That's wonderful. When did you say the Wednesday night farmer's market starts?
That's going to be the first Wednesday in June.
First Wednesday in June.
I don't have the date off the top of my head, but yeah, June through August, every Wednesday night, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving then to item 13, approval of a waif formal bidding on Resolution 2025-056-R. Who's got this one?
Yes, that would be for the Peace Bridge Bike Ramp. We discussed that at the last COW meeting. And the first step in this would be to waive formal bidding for the contract for the construction work. Any questions? I'll make the motion that we waive formal bidding for Resolution 2025-56R.
Motion in second for the waiving of formal biddings for Resolution 2025-56-R. Any further discussion on the subject? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sulfah?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right. Moving then to item 14, which is Resolution 2025-056-R, approval of a contract with electrical conduit construction in the amount of $543,988, including a 10% contingency for the relocation of electrical infrastructure related to the Peace Bridge pedestrian ramp construction. Who's got this?
I've got that, Your Honor. And this is electrical relocation that we are going to have to do with building this ramp. They're necessary to move it at this point, so that way it gets into a position where it's something that we can maintain and service in the future without having to tear anything else up. Any questions on it?
Questions?
One of those things that probably makes the most sense to get this done now.
Any further discussion?
Motion that we approve Resolution 2025-56R, approval of a contract with electric conduit construction in the amount of $543,988, including a 10% contingency for the relocation of electrical infrastructure related to the Peace Bridge pedestrian ramp construction.
We have a second? Motion in second. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Thank you. Sulfah?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Okay. Moving then to 15, waiver of formal bidding for Resolution 2025-54-R.
Continuation of the project for the Peace Bridge Bike Ramp. This would be a waiver of formal bidding on the actual construction work. So I'll make that motion that we waive formal bidding for Resolution 2025-54R.
Motion in second for the approval of waiving formal bidding on Resolution 2025-54-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sulfah?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Thank you. Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
All right. Moving then, motions approved. Moving then, Resolution 2025-54-R, approving a contract with V3 Construction Group Limited in the amount not to exceed $2,579,820, which includes a 10% contingency amount to construct the Peace Bridge Bike Ramp. Alden Wolf, you have this one?
I think so. And this is for the construction contract for that ramp. This is something that we've talked about, I think, for probably most of the time that we've, that I've been on the council, since we had the Peace Bridge was built, that there needed to be some upgrade or some change to it so that we didn't have to dismount bikes to get from one level to the other, so that we could keep people off of River Street during the farmer's markets, during the, you know, the bike travel away from pedestrians, just to have another route that was protected downtown. So this is something we've talked about for a long time. We do have the money available in the TIF districts to do this. Again, it's something that we've discussed for at least a decade. So this would be the construction contract for that. So I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-54R.
Motion in second for the approval of Resolution 2025-054-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sulfah?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
All right. Moving then to 15, waiver of formal bidding for Resolution 2025-54-R.
Continuation of the project for the Peace Bridge Bike Ramp. This would be a waiver of formal bidding on the actual construction work. So I'll make the motion that we waive formal bidding for Resolution 2025-54R.
Motion in second for the approval of waiving formal bidding on Resolution 2025-54-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sulfah?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
All right. Moving then, motions approved. Moving then, Resolution 2025-54-R, approving
That was one of the stipulations in the contract, was not to be, you know, blocked off on Saturdays. Yeah, because I think it is important for the Farmer's Market.
Other discussion? Do you want to make another motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-55R approving a temporary construction easement with the Batavia Park District for the Peace Bridge Bike Ramp area adjacent to the Peace Bridge.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
13, yes, no, no, one absent.
Resolution 2025-055-R is approved. 13, yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to 18, approval of waiver of formal bidding for Resolution 2024... Resolution 2025-061-R.
I can take it, Your Honor. This is for replacement or emergency arterial water valve at the West Water Tower, West Storage Tank. And this is something that's coming directly to council for us. But to do this and have the emergency repairs done, we need to waive formal bidding to start the process. Any questions?
Questions on that?
Everybody read the memo and see what was there. I'll make the motion that we waive formal bidding for Resolution 2025-61R.
Motion in second for waiving formal bidding on the West Water Tank Valve. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
13, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Moving to 19, which is Resolution 2024-061-R authorizing contract execution of emergency arterial water valve installation at the West Elevated Water Storage Tank by Aries Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $53,653.
Just as it states, this is emergency replacement of this water valve. We do have Jeremy here if anybody has any questions about it. I know he didn't just come to see the dog. Or maybe he did. Anybody have any questions? Is this something, just out of curiosity, is this something that we need to add to the system to help with it, or is it something that's getting replaced because it's defective?
Good evening, by the way. It is a valve that we need. We have a water main break right out front of the West Fire Station. It is not surfacing. It's not a bad leak at this time, but as you know, water leaks don't get better with time, they get worse, so we want to catch it. The leak is right off the tower, so we have no way to isolate the tower off from our leak area. So if I can install this valve, I can divert the water around us and give us a safe isolation to work in, to make the repair. And it's on 20-inch water main. It's a big water main, so.
It's the biggest water main we have, right? It's 20. Any other questions? Thank you. I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-61R authorizing contract execution of emergency arterial water valve installation at the West Elevated Water Storage Tank to Aries Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $53,653.
Motion in second on the Resolution 2025-061-R. Any further discussion?
So that implies there will be a second part of this project where they will work on that section? That implies there will be a second part of this project where they work on the leak section? This valve is installed under pressure, no disruptions to our system. Our guys will then, during summer break of school, of course, will dig up and make that repair in-house. This is very specialized, by the way. The valve needs to be put in under pressure so we don't disrupt the system. Once the valve is in, then I can shut that valve and divert water around us.
One other sidebar to this, Laura and I have had several conversations the last few weeks because we have a whole group of folks in this town that are big fans of the West Side Water Tower and what's painted on it. And the West Side Water Tower is getting a little dirty. And so Jeremy's, I think we got it ready almost to go. We're going to wash it off here sometime in the near term, right? Before the football season starts. So that's a big one. I hear more about that than spending these millions of dollars that we're spending there. Want to make sure that tower is shining high so that when all the visitors come in, they can see the great attention Batavia pays to their football team, so. Kirk call the roll on the motion.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
13, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 20, which is Resolution 2025-051-R renewing Fermi's Fiber Lease Agreement for SOW number five.
That would be the lease agreement that we have for the fiber that goes through Fermi Lab. I think it's 10 fiber bundle. I think it's 10 lines, right? Okay. And that's something that, you know, we've had in the past. I think it's a six-year lease, I think is what it's listed in the agreement. So that would be for a six-year term, starting now. Any questions? Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-51R renewing the Fermi Fiber Lease Agreement for SOW number five.
Motion in second for the approval of Resolution 2025-051-R. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
12, yes, one absent, one abstention.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to 21, the Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few items tonight. I wanted to let everybody know about a program, the Conservation at Home, is going to be presenting here in the council chambers on Wednesday, April 23rd, at 6:00 PM to learn about rain barrels and native plants. And in addition, the city is hosting a rain barrel sale again this year. It's going on through April 29th. Rain barrel pre-order pickup will be on Saturday, May 3rd, at Public Works from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. The new trees for the 50/50 program, and will start getting installed in early May, and then also the ones that we have ordered for new developments. By the end of this week, the Water Division will have overseen 500 lead service replacements within the city of Batavia. That is quite the milestone, and I'm really glad that Jeremy is with us tonight for us to, once again, thank you for your hard work and dedication in making Batavia a forerunner of all the municipalities in the state of Illinois. I don't know if anyone is as far ahead in this project as you have put Batavia, so thank you very much. In the Fire Department, our Fire Marshal, Tom Cody, and our probationary firefighter and paramedic, Nick Dean, who recently took his oath of office here, attended an industry fair at the Fox Valley Career Center. It's a good opportunity for us to recruit members to the departments. In the Police Department, members went to TRICOM Central Dispatch last week to participate in the center's annual employee awards and recognition event. And I just want to publicly say thank you to the men and women who work at TRICOM Central Dispatch. Again, part of some of the unsung heroes in our community, the very first people that folks in need talk to in order to get dispatched emergency services in our community. And also, our Comfort Dog River and Community Relations Officer Webb also visited our TRICOM Dispatch Center, as well as some other area dispatch centers, to offer them the opportunity to meet her and get a little stress relief. And something else that River did recently is she stopped by Alice Gustafson's school and throughout the day on Thursday, April 17th, to attend a Special Olympics Young Athletes event that was being hosted at the school. So there are just a myriad of ways that River is going to be an ambassador of comfort and love in our community. And we're so excited to have her be part of the team. And that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me. Yes.
The rain barrel sale?
Yes.
If somebody were to preorder, but were not going to be available on May 3rd, are there arrangements that could be made?
If you're not able to do the pickup?
Yeah.
I will look into that, and I will get back to you on that.
Anybody else, questions?
Very much.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the City Council?
I do. I have a list of things here sent to me by our favorite vexologist, Marty Callahan, for Flag Day festivities. So save the date for June 14th. It's a Saturday. 1:00 to 2:00 PM at council chambers, there will be a talk from author Tom Emery about Bernard Sagran, sponsored by the Batavia Historical Society. And then 2:00 to 4:00 PM, there's a Flag Day celebration at the Monument, community band speakers and tours. And then 4:00 to 6:00 PM, Red, White &amp; Brews, Hang With Heroes at the VFW. There'll be food trucks, the VFW bar to purchase food and drinks, presentations, music, and games. And then if you want any more information, check out the Flag Day Monument's Facebook page for details. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, quickly, under item 23, the Mayor's Report, a couple of things. Number one, at our next meeting, which will be the first meeting in May, three of us leave and three new people come on board. And I have procured the services of the Kane County State's Attorney is going to come in and administer the oath of offices to all those who have been re-elected, so that nobody is... It used to be a little bit strange when the mayor gets sworn in, he didn't have anybody else to swear him in. So instead of me doing all of them, the State's Attorney, who's a... She's a friend of mine. She's going to come in and do the swearing-in for, so that's good. What I'm feeling very happy about, though, is that we're going to revive something that we started, I don't know, 25 years ago. I had, at the time, I had a former alderman who's now passed away say, "Well, you know, you served so many years on the City Council, and your last meeting, you say goodbye, and you just leave and don't get nothing for being it." So at that time, I put together a little, called proclamation plaque, in which I outlined things that had happened during that alderman's time on the City Council. And quite honestly, it was well-received and well-done by, appreciated by those who got it. And so we haven't done it now for another 15 years, but I've already prepared the proclamation for next Friday, or next Friday, a week from Monday, when we have the next meeting. And we're going, the three of you who are leaving, are you going to get the new proclamation framed plaque with what, with your name on it? Each one's going to have their name on it about, and in it, we talk about things that have happened while you've been on the City Council.[1638.26]